The Cumberland County Board of County Commissioners. This kind of spot.
Adequate notice of this meeting was provided in accordance with Chapter 231 Public Law 1975 Senator Byron M. Behr Open Public Meeting Act.
Do we have a moment of silence? All right, the flag suit tonight, we just be led by you. Please rise.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic from which it stands, one nation under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Before we can start, our traveling road show, I really want to thank the commissioners in the city of Millville. Joseph, oh, is the mayor here? Okay, we'll wait for the mayor's to. Mayor Lisa Ordorf, she comes on in to, I want to thank the commissioners for allowing us to use this chamber to have our meeting, the idea is to reach out to the community. You guys have given us that opportunity, we really appreciate it. So, mayor, if you want to, if you have any words, if you just want to stand up as mayor Ordorf, I really appreciate it.
Yeah, I just, I think, sorry of rushing, literally dropping daughters off, daughter off and coming across town, all green lights was nice. So, welcome to the county commissioners, appreciate you coming here in Millville and allowing just the local Millville community to be able to attend a county meeting and see the difference kind of between the city of Millville and the county and how the meeting functions and just what's going on in the county, kind of giving us an update. So, we appreciate you being here and hopefully we keep doing this and continue building a relationship with the county and the city. Thank you all.
Thank you, we appreciate that. A lot of the commissioners who we stand, I got Benjamin Robinson, Joe Sui, Kurt Buell. We really do appreciate you guys allowing us to do this, so thank you.
As we do.
Okay.
Commissioner Pearson, present. Commissioner Musso.
Here.
Commissioner Capasola, excused. Commissioner Saleo.
Here, and I'd like to say one thing, I'm here on my 42nd wedding anniversary tonight, so I want to make sure that my wife knows where I am and I'm here. And I'll tell you one more thing, behind every good man, there's one better woman, and that's my wife, thank you.
Commissioner Lodes.
I'm here, and I hope Mrs. Saleo was tuned in to hear all that.
Deputy Director Romero.
Here.
Director Aubrey.
Here.
Do I have a motion in second to accept in dispense for the reading of the minutes from the last public meeting?
So moved.
Second.
All favor.
All favor. You would like, whatever you can respond to the board.
Letter dated August 23, 2023, from Atlantic City Electric to the Cumberland County Board of Commissioners enclosing notices of filing and public hearings in the matter of the petition of Atlantic City Electric Company for approval of rate adjustments pursuant to its infrastructure investment program, BPU docket ER 23050272, and in the matter of the provision of basic generation services for the period beginning June 1, 2024, BPU docket number ER 23030124.
All right, we talk for the public portion.
Do I have a motion in second to open public comment for resolutions only?
I'll make a motion second.
All favor.
Right.
Anyone from the public would like to address the commission, and if they do, they have five minutes, state your name, and if you have five minutes to do it.
Sandy Acevedo, Upper Deerfield Township. My first question is on 2023-693, the fairground master plan. Can you explain what's happening here?
Acevedo, we've been doing the master plan with the middle park fairgrounds and decide what we're going to do there, how we're going to expand it. Remember, we talked that we've got 170 acres added to that, and we want to start developing a park system, and it is our, really the only park. But I think that the resolution, we're kind of getting out of that study, it's the one I'm thinking of.
Yeah, it is.
Yeah, we're getting out of study because they're way behind in giving their results to us. Matt could probably elaborate a little bit on it, if you want to do that. Do you have, before you get, is there additional questions, or any one?
There's more, I have more.
Okay, no problem.
So, we were originally under contract through CCI with Clark, Kate and Hints for the analysis. The information that we received to date, we feel is not what we expected, and the feeling is, from an efficiency standpoint, that we can complete the remaining work in-house, still produce a master plan based on the information that's been completed to date, and then supplement that with in-house expertise, and we can have it done in a faster time. So, that's the plan.
Thanks, Matt.
Number 20.
Acevedo, did I answer your question?
No, I was just wondering.
Doug, I appreciate that, thanks.
2023-699, the Board of Health Resolution.
Ms. Shepherd's here. Megan Shepherd, she's the director.
Megan Shepherd from the Health Department, she has, do you have questions after that?
Good evening, everyone. Megan Shepherd, I'm the health officer for the Cumberland County Health Department. We've been billing for flu vaccine for the past six years, working through a billing company, and we've run into some issues with getting in-network contracts with private insurance companies. We can bill Medicare and Medicaid. There seems to be a disconnect with public health and being a central community provider. During COVID, we were able to bill insurance companies, recoup some of the costs and put it back into our budget, save taxpayer dollars. We don't charge co-pays, we don't go after residents for any kind of, if the insurance has failed, but we can recoup some of the costs with insurance companies. Once the federal emergency ended, we no longer could charge, get reimbursements from the private insurance companies. So, we know we can do it, because we did it during COVID, and we're just trying to figure out why we can no longer do that in New Jersey with our private insurance companies. So, this resolution is just supporting the initiative for local health departments to be able to become essential community providers, and that may entail some additional work with banking insurance at the state level.
Now, help us get reimbursement from the insurance.
Correct. Correct.
So, it's a proactive approach to try to get, recover some of our resources back to our budgets, so we can do more if we had to, so.
Correct. Okay, you're welcome.
Okay, the last one is 2023-682 and 683. What does resubmission two mean in these two resolutions?
So, if we go out for RFP one time, and then everybody, let's just say they're rejected for some fatal flaws, we then have to resubmit it out. So, a resubmission is us going back out for an RFP. If it gets to the point that the second round fails too, for whatever reason, then it would be identified as resubmission number two, so it's the second or third time we're going back out.
But it looks like some of these were already on there, and then some were added with this resubmission.
Which one is it specifically?
The professional service contract?
Oh, they were expanding the pool for the attorneys. So, if, let's just say you do an RFP for attorneys, one round, and for whatever reason, maybe not everyone downloads it, typically as a member of the pool, you can authorize the resubmission to acquire new vendors, additional vendors to be within the pool to be assigned.
As you do, Acevedo, we do a lot, we get a lot of suits, and we need to have a lot of.
Attorneys in the pool.
So, that's, have more people that we get approached, so then we can also be, see what they offer us competitive wise. Mr. Carr, has that summed that up a little bit?
Sure, that's accurate. You need a deep pool of attorneys for the exigencies that may occur, and we try to use them sparingly, but when you need them, you.
And that's why that we'd like to keep it as large as possible, so.
Okay, well, that's my comment. Good governance is the process of measuring how public institutions conduct public affairs and manage public resources and guarantee the realization of human rights in a manner essentially free of abuse and corruption, and with the dual regard for the rule of law. Governance is the process of decision-making, the process by which decisions are implemented or not implemented. Governance in this context can apply to corporate, international, or in this case, local governance, as well as the interaction between other sectors of society. The concept of good governance thus emerges as a model to compare ineffective political bodies with viable political bodies. The concept centers around responsibility of the governments and governing bodies to meet the needs of the masses, as opposed to selected groups in society. Good governance also assures governing bodies are free of corruption, conflicts of interest, and any appearance of impropriety. As the professional service contracts are being awarded, it's starting to feel like the same game as last season, just different players on the field. Our tax dollars should be spent on the lowest responsible and responsive bidders and not based on their party affiliation or campaign contributions. This board was supposed to do better, can do better, and should do better for the citizens of Cumberland County. Thank you.
Well, Acevedo, thank you. We've actually had a more diverse pool than we ever had, and this reflects that, we keep adding people to be more diverse, so thank you. Anyone else would like? Thank you, Dave, Mr. Regal.
Good evening. Welcome to Millville, thank you for having me. I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. On Resolution 2023-693, it's a resolution rescending the Resolution 2022-181, this is about the master plan which we just went over for the fairgrounds. And we happen to be ending a contract, and since most of the questions was answered, I'll ask my last question. Is there the possibility that we might be sued for canceling this contract?
So, there's a term in the contract between the Cumberland County Improvement Authority and the firm, Clark, Kate and Hints, that's called termination for convenience, and that's the term that's being exercised.
Okay.
So, I believe it's a fair game.
Fair game.
Mr. Ridgeway, they're behind, and it's hard for them, they're supposed to deliver the plan to us.
I can't hear you, we're really having trouble hearing you, I'm sure you all can hear us.
Better? All right, thank you. Ms. Ridgeway, they're behind, and that's, they're way behind in providing service to us.
I understand that, because I brought the question up months ago, I brought the question up.
I believe you did, so.
Where is the study? I took the survey, and nothing was coming before the commissioners.
Well, they did provide something to us, but it was not as, not as good as we thought it would be, and plus the timeframe of them taking their time, it was time to end it, and we've been building our planning department up, and they feel, as you said, Matt Posacci's answer, that we feel we could start doing that in-house, that we're going to develop more parks, so we will have the resources to do that, so.
I just wouldn't like to see another lawsuit.
Me either.
On Resolution 2023-700, I would really love to know who wrote this resolution. This is a resolution authorizing an access agreement between the County of Cumberland and Bell Nursery USA LLC pertaining to property known as Lot 6, Block 36, as showed on the City of Millville tax map. This is property that you are looking into to extend that avenue over to Buck Shoot'em Road, and I would really like to know who wrote this resolution. And whoever wrote this resolution, I believe, should get a raise, and don't let them go. They really need to be working for this.
There he is, right there.
They really need.
Do you want me to introduce the person?
Take a bow, please, John, take a bow.
You can elaborate, Ms. Ridgeway, why?
I have read this access agreement, dated September the 19th of '23, and it's really very good, and if we had this kind of agreement when the county done work near my property, maybe we both wouldn't be in the positions that we are in today. And I thoroughly believe that every property owner has the right to earn their, own their property, undisturbed. Do you get that? Undisturbed. Whether it's walking upon, blowing water on it, or whatever you do, we do have rights. Thank you.
Okay, of the state, thank you, John. Mr. Carr, you could pull in for your raise, I guess, but.
To be clear, we have fantastic assistance, I can actually take credit for anything good that comes out of there.
I'm glad that you're saying that, because I made a phone call.
There you go.
It was very fine decision-making on the commissioners to keep certain people when they came on board, when they were in.
And we try to do, this commission is trying to do things as best we can, and look at the issue beforehand, and put together the best product, and of course, have the best people working for us, so. And this comes out of the city of Millville, cooperation with the city of Millville, on a project that we're pushing forward, and it is the number one project, economic development project in the county, and we take that very seriously, and we're working very hard on it, so, both sides, actually, even some of the other townships too, so. All right, anyone else like to come to the mic? All right, seeing nobody, what, can I get a, can I get a second to close the public session?
So moved.
I'll second.
All favor.
Aye. When voting on resolutions, all matters listed under the consent agenda are considered to be routine in nature, and having been reviewed by the Board of County Commissioners will be enacted by one motion. Any item may be removed from the consent agenda at the request of any commissioner or board member, and if so removed, will be treated as a separate matter. Any items requiring expenditure are supported by certification of availability of funds. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Consent agenda resolutions 2023-632 through 2023-679.
They have a, I have a first, I have a second.
I'll make, I'll second.
Okay, all in favor? Oh, we're going to vote, we're going to take a voice vote.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Do I have a motion in second to adopt resolutions 2023-632 through 2023-679 by consent agenda?
So moved.
Second.
All favor. You're going to go it again.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Capasola?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-680, resolution awarding a contract for providing renewable energy consulting services for the County of Cumberland, RFP 23-28. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
For our vote, I just want to know what we're doing here. We, from day one, we talked about the idea of looking into getting, see if solar would fund our entire electric bill in the county. This is the, this is the fir, the middle step where we're at, to find a firm to actually look into doing that, and the idea is to produce enough electric, put up a source with no cost to the county, and create this, and in the end, pay our bills for whatever amount we spend on electric in the county, and that's the, that's the goal, and I think it's attainable, and here's the middle step, I guess. So, that's the person to explore that. So, I say yes.
Resolution 2023-681, resolution awarding a contract for providing out-of-school youth industry-focused occupational training and internship program services for Salem County, RFP number 23-20, resubmission. Do I have a motion in second?
I'll submit a motion.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-682, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contracts for providing labor counsel and labor law-related services for the County of Cumberland, RFP 22-72, resubmission two. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-683, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing litigation services, counsel for the County of Cumberland, RFP 22-73, resubmission two. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-684, resolution exercising first option to renew the contract for providing comprehensive, credible messenger, youth anti-gang identification, notification and mentoring program for the County of, for Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office, RFP 22-52, resubmission. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
No.
Resolution 2023-685, resolution approving change order number one to contract for providing translation services for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office, bid number 21-20, resubmission. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-686, resolution exercising second and final option to renew contract for providing translation services for the Cumberland County Prosecutor's Office, bid number 21-20, resubmission. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-687, resolution authorizing application to the New Jersey Department of Human Services, Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services for the renewal of Cumberland County Comprehensive Alcoholism and Drug Abuse Grant for calendar year 2024. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-688, resolution authorizing purchase from the New Jersey State Contract Vendor for one 2024 Ford Expedition Special Service Vehicle 4x4 for the Office of Emergency Management. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes, well, I made a comment, I spoke to the director, Gabe Scarp, earlier about this, and originally, I figured that, I was thinking that prices would actually, may drop, but now that there's a strike of, it's going to probably go through the roof, so it's actually a good idea to buy it, so I appreciate him being proactive also, so.
Resolution 2023-689, resolution awarding fair and open professional service contract for providing architectural services related to two roof replacement projects, 2020, 220 North Laurel Street and 800 East Comer Street, Bridston, New Jersey, pre-qualified per RFQ number 22-53, as needed, general A and E consulting services. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-690, resolution approving change order number one to contract for 2022 Guide Rail Program, various municipalities, Cumberland County, bid number 22-37. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Abstain.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-691, resolution approving change order number one to contract to increase fund for the amount of meals to be ordered for the nutrition program for the elderly of the County of Cumberland, Cumberland County Department of Aging. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Aubrey?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-692, resolution amending a resolution adopted August 11, 1960, designing certain county roads as through streets. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved. Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes, and a comment, I'm just going to say thank you to the Public Works Department who's been on the state. Several years ago, we made this Lebanon more in just a blinking light, but it's going to be great to see that, it's going to be a four-way stop, we were hoping to get a light, but since our last meeting two weeks ago, there's been four accidents on that street, so it's great to see that it will be a four-way, but hopefully in the future, we might be able to get a blinking, a red light there too. So, thank you to Public Works and State for making sure this happens.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes, and also with a statement too, some of the constituents that live in the area were very helpful in getting this expedited too.
Well, that's why I said state.
That's right. That's right.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yeah, and also a comment that, uh, had a few phone calls, that it was actually, uh, I was told that we've been monitoring this, it wanna hit, it sounds like a weird threshold, but if they have five accidents in a certain period of time, that's what they, well, we're, we're monitoring those intersections to have, are close, are dangerous, and hopefully, if things happen like this in the future, we'll, we will react and it's, uh, Public Works is doing that. So, thank you. And a yes.
Resolution 2023-693. Resolution rescinding resolution 2022-181 and authorizing notice to Cumberland County Improvement Authority requesting termination of the professional services contract with Clark, Katton, and Hens, PC, to develop a master plan for the county fairgrounds and other recreational facilities throughout the county between the authority. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
With the comment, what Miss Acevedo was asking about, that we, we have, this commission has been building up our planning department and it, and hopefully building up our engineering department with, uh, not only personnel, but internships in the future, that we could do more and more of the stuff that we've been putting off in-house, uh, to tackle problems that, since we're gonna be doing our park system, there'll be other parks we're gonna have to look at and design or create. And if we have the tools that we could use, hopefully whatever money we're putting out can be used more officially, officially in-house, uh, to develop this. That gives us more leeway, more place to change, to adapt, uh, to meet the needs of our citizens in the future. So, this is, it's a, a bad way this is ended, but it's, we did get pieces, and those pieces we'll, we'll, uh, work on. This load's gonna be ahead of that effort. We'll, we'll work on and make this, uh, better, and we'll come out with a good outcome from this, that are, that Cumberland County residents will be proud of, that this is what makes Cumberland County unique, not only our outdoors, but, uh, and, and shaped it to a park system, uh, how special this area really is, uh, for everyone. And we know that. So we're just gonna highlight it for everybody else. So, thanks. Good to see us.
Resolution 2023-694. Resolution amending resolution 2020-296 in order to accept a grant extension of one additional year for the FY 2020 Preventing School Violence, Stop School Violence Program. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-695. Resolution authorizing assignment of a labor matter involving Ronnie Byers pending in the Office of Administrative Law. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-696. Resolution authorizing a three-party agreement between Atlantic City Electric Company, Cumberland Salem Cape May County Workforce Development, and Rowan College of South Jersey Cumberland County Campus Education Foundation, Foundation concerning ACE funding for development initiatives. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
But, do you, would, do you like to say, tell someone about this program at all? Cause this is pretty unique. Just real quick, uh, uh, Miss DeLeonardo, it's the, uh, the workforce development, this is kinda something special that's, uh, being developed, and I think people should know about it. Uh, so I apologize, we're in the middle of a vote, but I think it's important that people know about this. So.
Good evening, everyone. My name's Kristi DeLeonardo. I'm the Director of the Cumberland Salem Cape May Workforce Development Board. Um, we've had a partnership with Atlantic City Electric for about six years, and they were kind enough to give our office $6 million to spend out to do some good in the community as far as programming is concerned. Um, Carol Musso has been on our board when that effectively, um, happened. So that was six years ago. And, uh, we are coming to the sunset, and the funds that, um, are just being, was just being voted on, um, we were able to provide 25 students, um, in, uh, that are residents, excuse me, of Cumberland County so that they could go and attend our CSJ. Um, and their first semester pretty much is at no cost. Um, so we plan on continuing to do this good, um, in our county. We would like to share this with our partners in Salem as well. Um, so you will be seeing something, um, next month, uh, in regards to another scholarship program.
Thank you. The vote is yes.
Resolution 2023-696. Resolution, oh, I'm sorry. Resolution 2023-697. Resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the Cumberland Salem Cape May Workforce Development Board and the Bridgeton Board of Education concerning ACE funding for electrical program. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-698. Resolution authorizing memorandum of understanding between the Cumberland Salem Cape May Workforce Development Board and Cumberland County Regional Board of Education concerning ACE funding for electrical program. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-699. Resolution supporting the Cumberland County Board of Health in becoming an essential community provider and assessing private health insurance contracts. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-700. Resolution authorizing an access agreement between the county of Cumberland and Bell Nursery USA LLC pertaining to property known as Lot 6, Block, Block 36, as shown on the city of Millville tax assessment map. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
The comment on this, and I've already made a comment, is that with the city of Millville's help, that this, we are originally given the time for three to five years to do this project. We've been shortening it, shortening it, shortening it, that by doing this, uh, by getting in there, doing this, while other things have been done, uh, I think we might be closer to three years, moving towards two years. We still have other things to do. So I'd just let you know that we keep, we keep looking and working together. These things could happen. It shortened the, how long it takes government to work, and, uh, this project is a good example of how we can keep doing that, pushing the envelope a little bit. So, yes.
Resolution 2023-701. Resolution authorizing approval to exercise renewal of a grant agreement with the New Jersey Department, Human Services, Division of Mental Health and Addiction Services for the County Innovation Program, number 24-671-ADA-1. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Okay. Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Very easy.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-702. Resolution approving budget amendment, County Innovation Program, $77,177. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Resolution 2023-703. Resolution awarding contracts for providing and delivering various traffic signal equipment and signed materials to the Cumberland County Engineers Office and the Cumberland County Cooperative Contract Purchasing System Identifier number 181-CCCCPS. Do I have a motion in second?
So moved.
Second.
Commissioner Pearson?
Yes.
Commissioner Musso?
Yes.
Commissioner Saleo?
Yes.
Commissioner Lodes?
Yes.
Deputy Director Romero?
Yes.
Director Albrecht?
Yes.
Excuse me.
Could I get a, uh, the, uh, our treasurer's gonna make his report, so.
And it's gonna be brief, I swear.
Yes.
Okay. So we began the month of August with a balance of $26,7886.24. Cash receipts of $36,55,185.25. Disbursements of $18,383,831.59 for ending cash balance of $43,679.239.90. Attached to that is your list of itemized investments totaling $58,957,394.31. And then the clerk has a couple CDs. I've attached, uh, a revenue and expense report as of August 31st for everybody. Uh, a couple meetings ago, we got a grant agreement from the state, uh, that was a 1.8 million for the inmate housing for Hudson County from last year. Uh, the state did execute that. We filed for reimbursement, uh, so I'm actively looking for that cash to come into our banks, because that's gonna help us with, uh, surplus available for next year's budget. Uh, in talking about next year's budget, uh, department requests have gone out, they've been received. We're now actively going through, uh, budget hearings, which will go to the end of October, at which point I'll have a rough draft budget to present a finance committee, uh, so that we can go through the steps there. Um, as far as what the actual revenue and expenses for the end of August are, uh, honestly, salaries and wages looks to be pretty good, which makes me happy, because it ended up just the way I was hoping for it to be. Uh, other expenses, which are vendor expenses, they are what I would expect. Some of them were a little higher, um, just because of the time of year. So fairgrounds expenses, that's gonna be higher, leading up to the county fair. Uh, so when you go through those, there's a little bit more context, but it looks good to me. Uh, some of our revenues are a little down in the, uh, constitutional officer, like clerk fees, surrogate, uh, but it's gonna be okay, because if you look at the investment report, um, there's a column for unrealized gains and losses. So a lot of our interest for our money markets is still sitting there. I haven't moved it over yet, probably gonna do that in October or November, and that's gonna be really helpful for us, making sure that we're, uh, at the very least, uh, meeting what we expected. But in all honesty, it's gonna be over. So, um, just wanted to share that with you guys and members of the public, whatever. Uh, you can motion to accept and file for audit for the August Treasuries Report. Any questions?
Mr. Ridgway, just, so we're financially sound?
As of right now, yes, but we're gonna get through the 24 budget talks first.
That sounds good. So, uh, just, I have a, uh, first and a second.
Motion in second to accept Treasuries Report.
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Do I have a motion in second for authorizing payment of all salaries and wages?
So moved.
Second.
All in favor?
Aye.
Aye. Okay.
Do I have a motion in second to open the public comment period?
So moved.
So moved.
All, all in favor?
Aye.
All right. At this point, anyone that would like to address any subject, we're, we're happening to, uh, to respond. Just state your name, and you have five minutes, and, uh, try to get an answer to you.
Good evening. My name is Steven Soloff, and I'm a resident of Villan. I've been trying to inform my vote regarding the upcoming elections for the past several months. It is my opinion that the county does not have easy access to a sufficient amount of information to cast a fully informed vote. After explaining my observations, I would like to suggest a possible solution, moving forward, to help ensure voters have easy access to comprehensive voting information. But before I get into all that, and as part of demonstrating how difficult it is to be fully informed, especially with time running out in the campaign season, can I get a commitment to answer a general objective question after tonight's meeting? can I get a commitment to answer a general objective question after tonight's meeting?
What did she ask, Adele?
It might be viewed as slightly inappropriate, and I only have five minutes.
All right, that's fine. We'll try to answer the best we can.
Sure. Okay, now that that's out of the way, let's get into my general observations. When I received the sample primary ballot on June 2nd and saw no relevant links to candidate information, my casual online search for information yielded nothing more than an insufficient, "Sorry, I don't have a website yet." I deepened my search after the primary election, reaching out through every available contact, be it social media, emails, or phone numbers, and still nothing. I also attempted to contact the local newspaper through all available means, which also yielded nothing. After contacting Mayor Finucci, the doors began to open slightly, but really only because I remained persistent and was lucky enough to have an open schedule, a luxury which most voters do not have. Also, by pure chance, while attending a Republican breakfast, Skip Louiezy's partner told me about Deerfield Day, and I just happened to have the afternoon off to meet some candidates, another luxury's most voters don't have. Then over the weeks, as some websites started featuring candidate information, the information was surface level, and accessing it required consistent proactive checks, another expectation unrealistic for the average citizen, who ideally should be receiving such information proactively from the county. After continuous engagement in county meetings and breakfasts, the possibility of hosting informational coffee clashes was briefly discussed. Yet, despite initial agreements to coordinate, there has been no progress or follow-up. While I would like to acknowledge the parties do try to proactively inform the public through methods like door knocking, radio shows, or previously promoted events, my contrasting experiences marked by persistence and fortuitous events reveals the underlying problem. Acquiring comprehensive consolidated information about our candidates is akin to navigating a labyrinth, one that many of our fellow citizens find challenging to enter, let alone traverse. I propose a rational and comprehensive solution, legislation ensuring that our public remains sufficiently informed about the candidates during election seasons. Here is what the legislation might entail. One, distribution of printed brochures. Regular distribution of brochures during the campaign season servicing those without sufficient internet access, as the middle mile grant would suggest. It would also service those without technical proficiency. Two, a comprehensive website. A regularly updated online platform providing consolidated in-depth information about the candidates. Three, timeliness. Information ready at least one month prior to primary elections with monthly updates. Four, oversight. A county committee to supervise the execution of these initiatives, maintain equality and adherence to guidelines. Five, objective standards. The information provided should include relevant biographical information, relevant resume experience, clearly stated positions on past and current issues, enumerated agenda propositions, and enumerated execution methodologies such as policy proposals. These implementations require creating dedicated positions, such as vetted county reporters, to not only seek relevant election information, but also to critically examine the presented information and ask crucial follow-up questions.
You have 30 seconds left.
Sure. Another position could also be an event coordinator, who could formally coordinate and market election-related events. If you are wondering what a consolidated website might look like, I invite you to look at a first draft version at informthevotecc.netlify.app. As this is a first draft, I am certainly open to suggestions. Our democracy is built on the pillars of an informed choice and active participation.
All right, time to just.
Sure.
Just real quick, everything, the things you're asking for are valid. The problem is that government, in its function, is not, that's not its function, government. These parties on both sides try to inform their voters as best they can. Everything you said is things we strive for to get the word out about our candidates daily, and we have discussions about how we do it. If we're not getting the word out, that's bad, that's not good, but the end, the voter has to decide or make the decision as best they can on what information they put out. As far as making government officials oversight of elections and putting down material, that's not good. I'm sorry, that's bad. So I don't know if anyone has other comments, but your, every point you have is a good, very good value, and we strive to do that. We're not always very good at it.
I think, if I could interrupt, I think that you're speaking of legislation. That's a word that I heard. This body does not offer legislation. That is not what we do. That might be something, your concerns are very interesting, and they might be best kept going to the state legislature or to your congressman in U.S. Senate.
Okay.
We are much in agreement with you that an informed voter is the best voter. And unfortunately, we do have a lot of uninformed voters that just go out and willy-nilly, you know, something down. Now, with that said, also remember that there's a political aspect to this, too. You don't want to have a county giving all the information on all the officials who are running, or, excuse, candidates that are running at the time, because there may be a bias from whatever party that's in interest at the time. So it has to be a separate entity that would be much more direct and also objective in the way they explain that particular candidate. So that's another thing. When we ran, all of us ran one party or the other, we all tried to promote our best foot forward. And unfortunately, sometimes, the only time a candidate and/or official gets put into a newspaper or into an article or into social media is usually when they're falling flat on their face with something going on and/or like we see what's going up with one of our senators.
Sure.
Or just something bad in general. They always like the muttery, and it may not even be true a lot of times.
But there were independent organizations, like the League of Women Voters, used to sponsor debates. I don't even know if they're around anymore, that people could actually stand up, and you could actually hear people giving their opinions. So, and that was always a good thing, because you actually could compare and contrast what they say.
And I do commend you for your desire to seek out information, and I commend you certainly for that. I will tell you, I do believe that there is a candidates debate, just as a public service announcement. There is a candidates debate, I believe, in October at Bridgeton High School. I forget the date off the top of my head, but the NAACP is sponsoring it, so that might be something that all voters would be interested in attending.
Yeah.
I'd like to thank you for your interest. I think oftentimes, we hear that there are a lot of people in a certain generational gap who really doesn't care about what happens, and I think you're absolutely correct. There is a vacuum of information in this county generally, because there is no news source. At one time, you could pick up the newspaper and profiles on everyone. Funding was available to get that information out. A lot has changed, the paradigm has shifted. People don't research anymore. They just listen to what they hear. They believe it, they don't think, they just act. And I commend you for at least raising the issue and trying to come up with solutions. That's the most important piece. If you don't try to change it, if you don't try to do something about it, it stays the same. So hopefully, as our commissioner stated, look at the legislative aspect of it and continue to press that forward. I really appreciate you raising that issue.
Thank you. Just as a quick follow-up, these are just initial suggestions as an average citizen, so whatever direction you want to point me in, I'm more than open to.
Well, you did say afterwards, you like to ask questions, so appreciate it.
Thank you.
Thank you, Stephen.
Anyone else would like to?
Sandy Acevedo, Upper Deerfield Township. At the VOTEC meeting on the broadband, there was an outstanding question from me that hasn't been answered yet. Since it hasn't been answered, I'd like to maybe amend that to include language that could reduce the potential for lawsuits in the contracts that are going to be issued for the broadband project.
Like what? What do you, what language?
Well, I don't know. I mean, I just know that we have lawsuits out from projects in the past that have failed or went awry, so maybe there could be language in future contracts that may reduce the potential for the lawsuits.
Acevedo, were you able to view the responses to the questions online? Was your question not responded to on there?
We created, a lot of the questions answered, we tried to answer. We actually put something out to answer those questions.
They've been posted on the county website and on the county Facebook page.
I didn't realize that's where they were going to be answered. Okay, on the county website?
The county website and the county Facebook page. The responses to the questions from the public hearing were posted. Unfortunately, we would love that if they were in the newspaper, but unfortunately, we don't have that kind of coverage here in the county, so.
Well, no, I just, I don't even recall saying that they were going to be posted on the website, so that's my, and I don't know what kind of language could be included, but something needs to be done to reduce the potential for lawsuits going forward. Especially in such a large project.
Yes.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Eddie, what else? Mr. Ridgeway?
Good evening again. I'm Nancy Ridgeway from Upper Deerfield and Fairfield Townships. Millville, thank you again for having us. I hope you enjoyed our meeting, and maybe we'll come back again. Let's see, I said I was Nancy Ridgeway. And yesterday, I was notified that a vehicle, at least, at least a vehicle, was at Roqueps Run at the base of South Avenue. And can you give us an update on the Roqueps Run Bridge? What's going on?
Actually, every permit is the Army Corps of Engineers permit received. We've received that, so we are actually towards the edge of the year. We actually believe that it's going to be, they've been looking at this for a while, so it shouldn't take them too long. I think they have 90 days, but we think it'll be shorter.
So originally, we were told that there was no need whatsoever to worry about getting any approvals or releases from the historical society, because if you go to Roqueps Run, there are metal rails there that used to be used to put ties down, because it was a part of the trolley that ran from Bridgeton all the way to Morris River. The plan does not interfere with that, with that remaining metal in any way whatsoever. We were told that we didn't have to get permission, that we didn't have to get any approvals. And then, the Army Corps of Engineers said that they wanted a release or a finding by the local historical society that there was no impact by the repairs to Roqueps Run, the color of Roqueps Run. Then we have to send that to the state who has to vote on it, and once the Army Corps of Engineers gets that approval from the state historical society that this will have no impact or they have no interest in the project, we'll have all the permits we need and can go out to do the RFPs to have, to design first and then RFPs to do the repair.
Some people was very excited yesterday morning when they saw a vehicle down there, and they thought maybe that something was going to be done.
We're as close as we can be.
Yeah, we're actually, actually, things are going along. Remember, originally, it was three to five years, or five to seven years, and that was down to less than a couple months than we started, seven months, eight months, so.
The bridge at Mary Can Drive, is that open now? Mary Can Drive Bridge, the park?
October, before that, it's September, because I think they're having an event, so they think it'll be open for the event.
It's almost a year.
You know, I think what's funny, people, when they see that vehicle, the vehicle's down there, everybody, and I've heard three or four people say to me, and this is no reflection on any work that anyone has done, but say, "God, I-95 was up and running in two weeks. Why can't we get down South Avenue?" I mean, they were just joking, but I'm just glad to see where it's moving. At least it's moving.
And Mary Can Drive has been down for almost a year, and it only took you five months to destroy my life. Thank you.
Well, we also, just to throw out that we will be tightening up our, we got approached by the city of Bridgeton asking about roads being ripped apart after they get paved, which is a big issue through the county. We do have a, when it's done on a county road, they're supposed to inform us. We will, we do have teeth in that order, so we will be reminding communities that when we do work, they have to ask us or tell us if they're going to start doing approvals afterwards. We found out one road they mentioned was actually, the city of Bridgeton was actually doing their own, they were questioning what we were doing, but they were actually tearing up the road themselves. But we are going to redo that road afterwards. I think it's Vine Street, so it was paved, they done all the work underneath it now. We're going to repave it, but it's, I guess it was intended to do that anyway, so. But we're going to actually, you're going to hear us in the future meetings, mention that to the municipalities that work, they have to inform the county when they're working on county roads, so, and we will, the ordinance does have teeth, so. So hopefully, that, in the future, we'll know better, so.
We have a tentative date on June 26th.
Be it a form of tentative date, open that, that, the, the bridge to the zoo. What is the date of the road? Mary, Mary Can Drive, October 26th. T tentative to be open, okay. Do we have a, do we have a motion to close?
Second.
All favor?
Aye.
Are we having an executive session tonight? No executive session. And again, I want to thank the city of Millville for hosting us. Oh, does anyone want to, do you want to start?
I will, yes. I would like to definitely thank Mayor Orndorff and all of the Millville city commissioners that are here and for allowing us to come in tonight. We very much appreciate that, and I have to say, I think it's very apropos that we are here this month. It's a big month for the city of Millville. We have a new auditorium. Our high school is finally finished, and we had a ribbon cutting on the new auditorium here at Millville High School. And I believe we have another exciting ribbon cutting this Friday on our new field. And I have to say, I think that it's not always easy to see, you know, if maybe you're not using the field or you're not sort of in touch with our youth in the area, but how much that really does make a difference and improves the quality of life here in the city of Millville, and it means a lot to the kids, I can tell you that, and their families, and just really increases that pride in themselves, their city, their schools, and their community, quite frankly. So I think it's a huge move, and I really applaud our member from the school district here and our city commissioners and our mayor as well. And of course, what do we have, 13 days to Jim's lunch opening? So, you know, big, exciting times here in the city of Millville. So I think it's perfect that we are here this month. You know, I recently was in a conversation with one of our local Millville residents, and, you know, we, the conversation was about that we don't talk about the positive enough. You know, everybody's angry, everybody's mad, and we're frustrated, and sure, there's lots to be frustrated about all the time, right? But there's also lots to celebrate. So I want to just give a couple positive updates. Number one, our website, while we are a little bit tense in that it hasn't happened sooner, it is happening, and so I think we're, what, three weeks out now? Is that correct? And so I'm very excited, because yes, to your point, Stephen, it is difficult to find information. I'm a communications person. That is what I am at heart. I'm a journalism major, public relations person, and a communications person. So information is of the utmost importance to me, and you often hear me get really kind of angry that we don't have an active local paper. And so I think it's really important that our public is able to access information in a very easy way. So I'm very excited. We're staying on top of that. We want that to be updated, and we have a lot of ideas and resources that can be added to that to help the community out as well. Also, another question that has come up tonight is about the fairgrounds and the master plan that we are looking at. And that was, the master plan was not, quite frankly, was not, that was ordered, I guess, last year with the previous administration. That was not really providing us with something that was in line with our needs and what we really are as a local community. We do have excellent talent in-house that is very much aware of what we need in those fairgrounds, and I think it can be an absolutely great place for everybody. I sit as a liaison on the fair ground, on the fair, the county fair committee. Say the word fair how many times, as well as the recreation committee. And they all have, and I've also talked to 4H extensively, and these are really our groups that use that property the most. And they all have a lot of information. And instead of ignoring them or throwing something at them after the fact, we have elected to incorporate all of them and develop a subcommittee where they can all sort of contribute information to really how they use it, what their visions are, along with the commissioners, along with our administrative team. And I'm really excited to have this sort of collaboration, because public input is really valuable to us. It's not just, you know, what we think. We want to hear from people. So I'm very excited to announce that that is an endeavor that we are working on. And then, I have to say that in the educational world, you know, with kids, you have to reward them sometimes. And so there's a thing that I like to do called "caught being good." But I'm going to do it here tonight, and we have a lot of fantastic administrative staff. But I have to say, Mr. Albino, I see you here tonight. And since you have come on board this year, you have had your hands full. And I can say that it has not gone unnoticed, the extra hours and time and effort that you have put in at our county jail to correct a lot of issues that were happening there. And so I just want to thank you for, you got caught being amazing. So thank you so much for your service to the county. We appreciate it. Also, I recently attended, along with Commissioner Albrecht, an update for CC Tech. And I know there's always been a lot of concern with CC Tech, myself included, right? I wish we could service more students. There are so many students that need more services, but it is one building, and there is only so many places for so many students there. However, I can say, after carefully looking at the numbers of the amount of students and the cultural makeup of the student population at CC Tech, the entire breakdown almost directly reflects, percentage-wise, exactly the makeup of the county itself. And so I know Commissioner Albrecht and I were really very pleased to see that and hear that, and what a fantastic job they're doing at Tech, and a great way that they are really accurately representing the county as a whole overall. We only hope that we can serve more students in that way at our city schools, and I know that they are all working towards that. Another shout-out to Millville, which does a great job with their CTE programs. So thank you very much. You're getting a lot of love tonight, Millville. And last but not least, I was recently at our RCSJ, Rowan College of South Jersey Board of Trustees meeting, and there is a lot to be excited about, and there is a lot of positives there. The face of the students and education has changed dramatically since COVID. In a post-COVID world, we have probably elevated education about maybe 20 years in advance. And that is a college and an institution that is changing to adapt to the needs of the student, and I couldn't be happier to hear that, because those students are our future workforce. And in case you haven't noticed, we're struggling with that in this area. I went over my five minutes, didn't I, Matt? I'm sorry. But we have the College of Asthematic Medicine, which is opening, I believe, in March, anticipated opening, and we are working to partner with them as well on a school of manufacturing. And there's a lot more information, but I've been incredibly long-winded already this evening, but I can tell you that there's a lot of positives happening that are going to begin to have amplified effects around this county, and so I'm very excited, and I just wanted to report that to all of you. So thank you for attending tonight.
Commissioner Lewis, you've really saved the poll out there today. Nice job. Commissioner Russo?
Sure, I'd like to say the same thing. Thank you very much for sitting over for having us. So it's great to be in these seats tonight. Just a couple things. Next month, October 25th, between the Sheriff's Department and Office of Aging, they're doing Triad again. The Sheriff's Department will be providing the lunch. It will be held in Millville, Millville Oaks. So hopefully, our seniors and everybody can get out for that day. The next thing I want to just say, Commissioner Lewis was saying about, you know, hiring and our county struggling with employees. Well, the three chambers got together, and also workforce development helped us, and we had an expo and hiring event at the CC Tech last week. So I just want to say, it was a great event for us. There was a lot of companies out there, businesses, that were hiring, so a lot of law enforcement that was out there. Director Albrecht was out there. We had a lot of our county employees out there, departments out there, you know, saying about our internships and just different things that we had on different departments that was available. So it was just a great event, so hopefully, between the businesses and our own county, we'll find some great employees that we can, you know, employ throughout the county.
Thanks. So, your anniversary, you better make it good.
Honey, I'm coming home eventually. A couple of things. Number one, I'd like to thank Public Works, Neil, Doug. They've been very responsive with the commissioners' requests. They get out there when something needs to be done, and they get it done very quickly. There is a timeline for a lot of road development and road repairs. We were fortunate enough to get that list now. Another unfortunate thing though is that list seems to change on a daily basis because of, you know, weather, conditions of the roads, mishaps, those kind of things. So if you're scheduled to have any type of road work done, understand that things change real quickly, and if you have any questions, please call the county, and if it's a county road, we'd be more happy to give you an idea of when it may be anticipated. road, we'd be more happy to give you an idea of when it may be anticipated for your road to be, you know, taken care of, and/or any type of corrections to be made to it. That's number one. Number two, I want to talk about the border health. They did a great job. Noah Hetzel and Megan Shepherd, they did a great job. Mrs. Stubbs seems to be very happy now. Her septic system is in place, and she's looking forward to, I guess, moving shortly.
She wants to, because she wants to.
Not because she wants to, right. She wants to stay in Cumberland County. But more importantly, you guys acted swiftly at the request, and I want to thank you all for that. Melissa, the same thing. You do a good job. Keep it up. And also, I'm going to say the same thing about Chuck. Chuck, when I first met Chuck at the diner, Tony and I, and we were interviewing him, none of us were sure what to do with the jail. It was a major, yeah, a mess, just a mess. And we were left a lot of garbage. And at someone's suggestion, we brought Chuck in, and I can't be more happy that we'd made that decision. And it just goes to show you that this commission here is, are making the right decisions to get this county moving forward, and I want to just thank him again, and that's all I would love to report.
Ms. Pearson.
I too would like to sort of tag a little bit with Commissioner Loz. We often hear a lot of negative things, and we don't always hear everything, and the good things that happen in our county. We're inundated with the negatives nationally, locally, statewide. But I did want to give a few shout-outs. Being a commissioner means that you get to be a liaison to many different departments, many different activities. Basically, this is a busy board. You may not see us here, but they're, we're there, somewhere. And I just wanted to shout out to those particular boards that I have been liaison to, who have just been consistent with being very creative. They come up with new ways, new initiatives, new funding to provide state-of-the-art services to the people in this county. I don't think people understand how much work our employees do. We hear what doesn't happen, but we don't hear what does happen. Just as Mrs. Ridgeway gave John Carr a shout-out for writing a great resolution, we have people in our departments, our Human Services Director, Melissa Niles, works 24/7. There isn't a person in this county who does not have an issue with opium, drug abuse, mental health issues, that her staff is not working. Money, and you look at these resolutions that come in with the grants that are coming in for all of these departments, that's what's funding a lot of them. They're getting this through grant money. Our county library, Jennifer Brenner, this is an amazing gem in our county. This county is going to go global. The library is going to go global with the money and ideas that she and her staff are coming up with. The Department of Health, as Commissioner Slale has already stated, I'm scared of them. I am really scared of them. I don't want to go in there sneezing. I don't want to go anywhere. This is an amazing group of people. They are professionals. And I don't think people realize that these are real professional people with real credentials, real licensing, working on behalf of this county. I am not a liaison to Workforce Development, but I have known Kristy DiLattardo since she, 20-something-plus years, she has always been right on top of everything. And I just want, I love the scholarships, I just love the creativity, and I love what you do. But I just wanted to say that and give them a shout-out, because they work. Many, much of what everyone does, if you're working in human services, if you're working, trying to provide a service, you don't leave it when you leave that office at 5:00. It stays with you. Cheryl, you know.
That's because none of them are leaving at 5:00.
Right, thank you. You're there, you're there, 24/7. So I just wanted to thank them very much, because I think that, for me, has been one of the best parts of being a liaison and being a commissioner, is just to see the good things that happen in this county by people who are employed by the county, for people who are dedicated to the people in the county. So I just wanted to say thank you to all of you, and that is my comments.
Ms. Ray.
Thank you, Mayor. Thank you for using our, your facility. You always have a yes for us. Every time we wanted to be here, you guys always great to us. I'd like to thank Barbara Nathan, because nobody mentioned her, and she goes, you know what? When you're doing a great job.
You don't get mentioned.
When, when you handle cats without a problem, when you have the transportation and you have all these issues, nobody remembers you. So I'm, I'm going to remember you today, and you do a great job for us, and nobody does that, you know? All I hear is that, you know, how good you've been to this county, and, and I appreciate that. The rest of you, Neil, you took care of the, all the issues, like Sully O'Shea, you took all the, took care of the issue, the complaints that we had from commissioners last, last month, you know? I hope that weed doesn't grow no more. But, but, you know, I'll thank everybody. I mean, we're very grateful to all the supervisors. I mean, we, you know, nobody's ever mentioned that we finally closed the deal with the social service, with the, with the union. We've been a month and a half already, and, and finally, we put that away, so thank you. You know, and I'm glad we got, we don't have a bunch of signs in here when we go out there. So, you know, great job. And, you know, and we're very thankful from everybody here, very thankful. So, you know, there was not much more to say. I mean, we had a great speaker with Tori and Musso, and it's a pleasure dealing with Donna here, every, you know, and Sully, of course, you know, every day I talk to Sully, always, you know, great anniversary, and I'm, I'm coming over to you. I'm coming over tonight.
Yeah.
I know, but. I might be sleeping in your house.
So, so thank you, everybody.
Well, thank you. All right, I, I have some comments, so hold on here, so. I just want to point out, we, we had a summer youth employment program where we had over 100 interns, and 90% of them were private industry, that we funded to, to help them during the summer to get experience, local, they were local kids. So we're, we're trying to build something we've been stressing for, since, I've been stressing for 40 years, the idea of adding, to push internships in this county. It's, we have a person, a employed person, we're proceeding to make contacts with our college, our local, the community college, Rowan of South Jersey, but also Rowan University. But we're reaching out to Stockton, we're reaching out to Wilbrook and Delaware. But we've also just recently had Rutgers camp that come down to us, and they have reached out to us about helping with their, bring their nurses down here, bring, and as we were speaking with them, we did have our directors in the room to, they also brought their many other areas that they have that can reach into Cumberland County, give us, and we'll explore everyone. They said that was the initial meeting, but it's interesting that they came to us because they see that we're trying to do things, we're moving forward. We also just recently paved muddy islands, the road, muddy island, we raised it three inches. Our $40 million oyster industry goes down this road. The road floods, they have problems. We were trying to correct it. Our Senator tested, brought the Department of Transportation down. We had a, a meeting. I know when they were there, they said, well, you need all the players to be, to be involved. We need the county, and, and our Senator turns, they're here. We're all there. We're like, yeah, we're here. The local government was there, so we, the DEP, or the DEP wasn't there, but the, but they, the bottom line is that they, they were, they knew that how important this road was, and, and you talk about teamwork, we were, we were all there, and we, and they were saying, they asked us what we were, we were there. What do you need? And we were working together. I, the expo that, that Ms. Musso mentioned, I believe was very successful. Our, our corrections officer was there, they, when I walked up to them, they all had smiles on their face, because they had like nine candidates that were, that were like interested in becoming, in our corrections, but also our sheriff's department at the same time. But our, we were well-represented, putting out what we, what we could do, what we need, and it, it was, it was really good to see, and it was a, just a very, a timely program, because I think it's starting to turn, that people are out looking for employment, and we were there. Sorry, I'm trying to read my handwriting, so the.
We always have to.
I know. I had an opportunity to attend the OSHA County, go to OSHA County, attend the South Jersey Commission Association. They're coming to Cumberland next. It's an organization that focuses on many issues that affect the county and that affect our municipalities, and they had, they covered a lot of issues. It was, when we work together as a team, things get done, and, and so it's good that we're part of these organizations, and they do reflect well on, on things we do. And I want to point out that, you know, Ms. Pearson mentioned the library, how effective they're going to be, that we're actually going to grow our library system. The City of Bridgeton is actually going to team up with us, they're still talking to us. But we also have our cyber, our IT department that created the first county-wide cybersecurity. It's, I say it again and again, because it's Cumberland County leading, and, and the state of New Jersey knows we're leading, and, and I thank Stan Fields for doing that. But it's the, the energy of the people in it that sees that they're not alone when they're facing a problem. They have people to pick up the phone and call. It's, it seems fundamental, it's, that, that it sounds kind of stupid, but it's fundamental, and we implemented that, and we did that. I, you already heard about the Health Department, which we turn to. I make those phone calls after hours to people, many times, and say, hey, what about this idea? They always pick up the phone, they go, yeah, Doug, we're, we're doing this, we're doing that. I really appreciate that, because the staff, they never, they do not rest. They do take the time to, they know what has to be done. We're trying, this commission has tried to be proactive on many issues, and it's reflected in the staff, because they have many answers to the question, many answers to the problems that we're seeking. It's needs will to be behind them, to support them, to get it done. I, so I thank them, and I thank the City of Millville again, and we, and I think we're, do we have a next place we're going to be at? We're working on either Lawrence Township or Fairfield or Deerfield. So we, we're making our routes to the county, and we try to do it every quarter, so we appreciate the people listening to us. So do I have a motion for adjournment?
So moved.
Second.
Second.
All fa, all favor? Aye. Okay.
This one is the end.